Okay, good evening. It's 6:00 and we're gonna go ahead and get started. This is the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. We're gonna start the meeting by standing up and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can the city clerk please take role?
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Jay David Reed.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Ed Ulliberry.
Here.
All city councilors are present.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem Reed, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we would like to remove items 14 and 15 dealing with the Palante addition annexation.
Okay, thank you, noted. Okay, next on our agenda, we have a proclamation for suicide prevention recognition. And is Jamie Hurst with Tri-County Health here tonight? Fantastic. Jamie, if you would join me up front and I'll read the proclamation. Just right here. This is a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which is in September. Whereas suicide is the 12th leading cause of death in the United States, the second leading cause of death among children and teens ages 10 to 14, and the third leading cause of death among people aged 15 to 24. And whereas, in the United States, 48,183 people died by suicide in 2021, equivalent to one death every 11 minutes. And whereas, in 2021, suicide was the eighth leading cause of death in Colorado. And Colorado had the sixth highest suicide rating of states in the United States. And whereas, over 90% of the people who die by suicide have experienced symptoms of a diagnosable and treatable mental health condition, although often that condition was not recognized or treated. And whereas, organizations such as Tri-County Health Network are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide through research, education, advocacy, and resources for those who have lost someone to suicide or who struggle. Now therefore, we, the city council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim September 2023 a Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Montrose. And we urge that our community recognize suicide as a preventable national and state public health problem and declare suicide prevention to be a priority. Acknowledge that no single suicide prevention program or effort will be appropriate for all populations or communities. Address the disparity in access to mental health care for underserved and underrepresented groups and advocate for ending those disparities. Fund new suicide research to support culturally informed and evidence-based mental health care service. Encourage initiatives based on the goals contained in the Colorado National Collaborative for Suicide Prevention. Promote awareness that there is no single cause for suicide and that suicide most often occurs when stressors exceed the coping abilities of someone struggling with a mental health condition. Develop and implement strategies to improve and increase access to quality mental health, substance abuse, and suicide prevention services and programs. And continue advocacy to ensure that we can reimagine a comprehensive suicide, mental health, and substance use crisis response system that builds on the historic new 988 number for the suicide and crisis lifeline.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for letting me join tonight. My name is Jamie Hurst and I'm the Suicide Prevention Coordinator at Tri-County Health Network. And prior to working at Tri-County Health Network, I worked for three and a half years at the Crisis Walk-in Center here in Montrose. Talking about suicide is not only the first step in preventing it, but also in healing from it. The statistics included on the proclamation itself can shine a light on suicide numbers in our counties. But the conversations we have with neighbors and the stories we tell our coworkers and friends truly illuminate the impact suicide has on our community. Local governments are in a unique position to help keep that light trained on our towns, cities, and counties, both during the month of September and year round. We thank you for having the courage to help reduce the stigma that comes with this topic and we know your community members feel the same. We encourage anyone who needs support or wants more information to reach out to us at Tri-County or to 988 Suicide Prevention Lifeline. Thank you for your time and for proclaiming September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming.
Item number six on our agenda, we have a special guest. Chief of Police Frank Rodriguez from the town of Olathe would like to recognize the city council and the City of Montrose for their partnership and support of the town of Olathe. Good evening.
Good evening, all of you. I appreciate the time. Do I have to get up in the microphone?
Yeah, I really do. We record it and it's only way that it picks up our voices.
We want you on the record.
Gotcha. Okay, how about now?
Perfect.
I appreciate your time to each of you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, City Manager's Office, Montrose Police Department, and of course, the beautiful members of this great city. On behalf of the town of Olathe and the Olathe Police Department, I'm here to express to you a sincere appreciation for your support of our beautiful community. And we've had some very formal requests. Each time, they were met in a manner that exceeded expectations and I think definitely Chief Tim Cox is a great example of it. But I think, for me, it was the unsolicited request that really embodied the spirit of this great council to the benefit of both our communities. Any apprehension I had coming here from North Carolina were completely raised by the relationships and collaborative spirit. I think each of you have instilled, not only this council, but the city, to the benefit of your communities and those that surround this city. So, on behalf of Olathe and our police department, I'm giving you, it's just a small token and whoever would like to receive it, I'll explain what it is. In this photo are two vehicles. There are two surplus vehicles that the council approved for purchase for us to use. And these vehicles are out in the community right now providing service to our citizens and that want to be in safety. So, to each of you, you have a home in Olathe. We are standing, willing, and ready partners to your north. We are here for anything needed. We'd love to reciprocate that. So, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Here's a photo.
Fantastic.
Can we take a photo?
Yeah, absolutely.
How's my hair? Is my hair okay?
Fantastic. Thank you so much. We really appreciate this and I'll make sure to pass on your comments to our chief as well, who wasn't able to be here tonight.
Yes, ma'am. It's his birthday, so make sure he gets his licking. I was blowing his phone up this morning, so thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda tonight is the call for public comment for non-agenda items. So this is the time during the meeting that if someone in the public wants to say something to council, but it isn't something that's on our agenda, this will be the time. If it's about something on our agenda that we're gonna vote on, you'll have a time on that piece of the agenda to take comment. So before I read all the legal language, let me just see by raising your hand, is anyone here to say something to council during this period? Great. Okay, hold off a second. I'll read all this legal language and then you can come on up. The call for public comment agenda item is a time when members of the community may publicly voice their concerns. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please stay on topic and limit comments to three minutes. Also be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to engage in discussion or debate. However, the city may respond, when appropriate, at a later time. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented stores are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local law. That being said, are you guys together? Do you wanna come forward? No, you're just both sitting there. Okay. Come on. We ask that you clearly state your name and either your address or your neighborhood for the record.
Thank you. My name is M.G. Conti. I live at 843 East Main Street in Montrose. As a point of reference, that's directly next door to Coffee Trader and directly across the street from Horsefly Brewing. I need to start by thanking this town immensely and sincerely for welcoming us here and just being so kind to us. We love this town. I came from California and I'm quick to say I don't wanna change anything. You folks have a great thing working here and I'm very, very happy and proud to be part of this community. That's the biggest reason why I wanted to be here today was to tell you that. And it's exemplified by the fact that this town gave two cars to the City of Olathe for their police department. It just keeps coming again and again. I wanted to speak specifically about the building that we purchased. Back in 2020, in the middle of COVID, I came here and considered purchasing a building and contacted Amy Sharp with the city and told her that I was interested in buying that building. It was very, very worn down. It's bad enough on the outside, it was a disaster on the inside, but it had great promise. There was two apartments in the back that were absolutely destroyed. And we renovated those. We found out that there was funds available from the city for a number of different things. That building had been sitting there vacant for years and ran into all kinds of problems. We've since added an additional residential space to it and there's still commercial space. We're still trying to decide what to do with at this time. But at some point, we'd like to come before the city and ask for some support and help with this. It's such a fantastic building and can be a wonderful benefit to the community, but unfortunately, at this time, it needs some help. We poured every single penny, without exception, back into this property, not taking a single cent for ourselves at this time. And so, we'd like to ask for help, though. I'd encourage you to drive by and take a look at it, see what it looks like, and see what we're trying to do to fix things up. So I at least wanted to introduce myself and say thank you to all of you for your service. Perhaps one day I'll be sitting on that side of the bench and doing what I can to serve as you folks are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for coming.
I did wanna introduce my lovely wife, Suzie.
Okay.
Well, good evening. My name is Suzie Conti and I, as well, am so grateful to be here to address all of you. People say, "Don't get Miss Suzie started talking about education because I won't be quiet," but I see I have a timer.
You have a timer, so.
So, we are so grateful to be here. I like to say my husband rescued me from Santa Barbara, where I was running school for many years. And I just am so grateful to be here and learn more about the community, wanting to serve the community here. Children are a huge part of my life. I'm so grateful to have been in the field, to continue to be in the field of education for 30 years now. So, the community has really, really warmly welcomed me. I recently had a radio interview on KVNF and I was recently in the Montrose Business Times. And so, we're here. I have teachers working on my staff with me. We are a support program, mentoring, tutoring, doing a lot of really unique, creative things to help children. It's hard to be a child these days and it's hard to be a parent. So I have a huge vision. I often like to say I'm a little lady, but I have a huge vision because I know that this community already, I've been in business for a year, has been a soft start. And having these families and children come to me, this town is hurting. The children are hurting. And I'm so grateful that people I am interviewing, and even a woman I interviewed this morning to join my team, finding like-minded people that are excellent at what they do, and that's what I like to do. That's my business model. I hire people that are smarter than I am and that are excellent in their niche. So for me, education, educating parents, educating children, coming alongside, being invited into the schools, has been just exciting. So I have a really, really exciting parent talk series that we are putting on. It is a free event and we have one talk per month planned, starting in September. The first topic is parenting in the digital age, which is an important topic to bring up. So I come with a lot of head knowledge. I come with a huge heart for families and children. By way of introduction, wanted to let you know more about who I am, what I am doing. I have a Facebook page here. I don't know if that's appropriate, but I would like to share these flyers, if I may do that at the end. The reason that I am speaking after my husband is because currently my business is in our home. We have commercial space. And I am old-fashioned in this modern world, so we have vintage classrooms. I have a cellphone basket where the students drop off their cellphone, so we can work together. I am able to relocate my business. I don't have to be where we are. Our proposal to be, will be to you. What is the best use of our beautiful home? It will be beautiful. Currently, I'm running my business there. I can relocate. So we have questions for you. And I just wanted to introduce myself. Thank you so much for allowing me the time to speak with you this evening.
Thank you. If you would give those to our city clerk, she can make sure we get them.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Anyone else here for public comment for items that aren't on the agenda? Okay, great. Come on forward. And you know the routine. State your name and where you live.
I am Bertisensley. I live in the Seasons subdivision, right across the street from the golf course lot, I would say. And my complaint is, we finally got them to mow some of the weeds, but there's still some tall weeds. I would like to know what it costs when they put that temporary road into the golf course, what it costs to put that berm in and plant all of the plants along that road. Now the weeds are higher than the dead plants because it's got a drip system that has never been working last year or this year. So all of the plants that were planted in that area are all dead. Now I called the city, they tell me it's golf course property. I try to get ahold of Tom. Of course, he's off with the high school kids with tournaments, so I don't get to talk to Tom. So I guess it is, golf course is responsible to maintain that and it sure doesn't look good. I mean, it's just a waste of money what they put into that berm and all the plants that they planted in that area. It's a shame.
So is your contact information, did you sign in outside the doors on the sheet so we have a way to reach you with some more information?
No, I didn't.
Okay. When you leave, if you make sure that it's down there and maybe you can put "golf course question" and that way, a staff member, the person who has a good answer for you will be able to contact you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment tonight? Okay. See none, then we're gonna keep going with our agenda. And just a reminder, every agenda item, every time we vote on something, there's an opportunity for public comment at that point. Okay. Item eight, approval of minutes. This is council consideration of minutes of the August 15, 2023 regular city council meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the August 15, 2023 regular city council meeting as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Please vote. And that passes 5-0. Okay, next on the agenda tonight, item nine, ordinance 2639 on first reading. This is council consideration of an ordinance extending the temporary moratorium to prohibit the establishment of any new or relocation of existing adult gaming arcade uses within the city limits of the City of Montrose, providing that the moratorium shall be in effect for a period which shall terminate at the earliest of the city's adoption of an amendment to Title IV, Chapter 14, Adult Business Regulations, or the expiration of 547 days from the date of passage of ordinance 2594, providing for legislative findings, intent, and purpose, providing repealing clauses, and providing an effective date. And I will turn this over to Assistant City Attorney Matt Magliaro.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here on a proposal to extend the citywide moratorium on adult gaming arcade uses that's currently due to expire September 22nd, 2023. This proposal, if adopted, would extend for 18 months until March 21st, 2025, expiring and repealing the first minute of March 22nd, 2025. This was discussed in the work session earlier this morning. There have been no changes between the proposal I had brought before you and what was discussed at the work session at some length. There's a clean version with recital whereas clauses, that's on pages 15 through 19 of this session's packet, and then a red line appears on pages 20 through 24. As we discussed this in the work session, I'm not gonna talk too much on this, other than just give a pretty high-level executive summary and then take any questions, if that's all right. This would purport to break 11129 into two subsections, B1 and B2, in part for readability. B1 is language in the code now. B2 would be new language, declaring that owning, leasing to, or operating new establishment in violation of the moratorium is a nuisance under our code. Also setting forth kind of a unit of prosecution or prosecution measure and expressing a consecutive sentencing authorization is authorized by the Montrose Municipal Court upon condition for anyone who violates the moratorium. This is already in our code or derived from different versions of our code. It's, to clarify this language, add, it's a restatement of what the ordinance has already allowed, in addition to the extension of the moratorium. So that's what's before council this evening. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. We went over this in this morning's work session. Does council have any further questions or comments before we entertain a motion?
I would just like to comment that no further discussion, but we recognize the fact this morning in discussion that this has been a tremendous success and has truly accomplished its intended purpose and I believe should be extended as requested.
Thank you.
And this morning I had mentioned that because of the hard work Mr. Magliaro has put in, that it has become sort of a benchmark and other communities are following our lead on implementing moratoriums and temporary moratoriums and bans outright on this gray gaming area. And I just wanted to publicly acknowledge Mr. Magliaro for all of his hard work, as well as all of our other staff on our PD as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. And I think you mentioned that it accomplishes what we set out to accomplish and I'll just clarify that that is a reduction in crimes that were being committed in and in the parking laws of these adult gaming businesses and being a nuisance to the businesses that surround them and that has cut down on that. Without any further questions or comments, could someone please make a motion? Oh yeah, of course I wanna do public comment. Thank you. Would anyone like to make public comment about this ordinance? And an ordinance means we're making a law and what we do when we're making a new law is we read it twice. So we do this at one city council meeting, we'll vote, and then we'll come back at another city council meeting. So in case members of the public hear about it, they wanna give their input, they'll have that chance. And then we'll vote a second time and then it becomes a law. So it takes two readings to become law. So we're at the first reading. I say that because I bet you're trying to get a badge on like civics or something, so you might as well learn something. Fantastic. Okay. So, any public comment on this ordinance for the first reading? Seeing none. Would someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2639 on first reading as presented.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second, so please go ahead and vote electronically. And you'll have to probably scroll down to save your vote on this one. And that passes 5-0 unanimously. So we'll go on to the next item, item 10, ordinance 2637, second reading. This is council consideration of an ordinance amending the zoning district designation of two tracks within the Seasons subdivision from B4 Neighborhood Shopping District and R3A Medium High Density District to R4 High Density District. And I'll turn this over to the Cities Planning Manager, Jay Stockwell.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is second reading, so I'll have this a little bit brief compared to the last presentation two weeks ago. As I know, there's a couple of citizens in the audience, so I will elaborate here and I'll try to share my screen with how technical issues. It's telling me it's connecting, I promise. All right, sorry about that. Yeah, as I mentioned, what we're looking at is a second reading this evening for a rezone of property located at the northeast corner of Hillcrest in Miami, from B4 in R3A to R4, which refers to high density. Again, no changes from the last presentation two weeks ago that passed with a 4-1 vote. I will mention, this was heard by Planning Commission at their November 30th, 2022 meeting and they did vote to recommend approval with a 4-3 vote in favor. Here's the zoning map, the current zoning map of the subject property and the surrounding areas. Area 1 is the property located adjacent to the northeast of the Hillcrest Miami Roundabout. It's shaded in pink there. This property is zoned B4 and totals about 4.92 acres. B4 refers to neighborhood shopping, just to clarify. The second area proposed to be rezoned is the area kind of further to the northeast of Pennsylvania Street. That property is currently zoned R3A and totals approximately 4.31 acres. And R3A refers to residential medium high density. So for the request this evening, the applicant is proposing R4, which refers to high density. I won't go into this in detail, but this is just the exact zoning map depiction. And one thing to mention here is that the rezone actually would resolve some split zoning that currently exists. So the northeast parcel there zoned both R4 and R3A and this would just rezone the entirety of it to R4. Just for some further details, I won't go into these like I did in the last presentation. But one thing I really just wanna hit on is the zone districts and the difference between these zone districts. So R3A, which track two zones, is very similar to the R4 district proposed. Setbacks and height requirements are identical and uses are very similar as well. Both of these allow for multifamily. The only real fundamental change is density, as I mentioned, and the difference in density for R3A versus R4 is four units per acre. So R3A would allow for 15 units per acre, maximum density. R4 would allow for 19 units per acre. And so that's really the fundamental difference here. And the same thing really applies for Track 1 as well, which is the B4 zoned property. That does allow for some other commercial type uses, but it would also accommodate multifamily at that same R3A threshold. So really in short, what we're looking at is a rezone to accommodate higher density. And so current density would allow for 164 units, whereas the proposed density if rezone to R4 would be 195 units. So just a point of clarity, everyone always likes to know that the difference is there with the unit counts. What we see here is just the rezone criteria. The rezone should not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare of the community and the request should be consistent with the comprehensive plan. This is the comprehensive plan future land use map. What it reflects is the sites designated as residential mixed density medium and neighborhood center. And both of those really could accommodate for a number of things, but multifamily residential is certainly one of those components that it refers to. And then looking at the comprehensive plan specifically as it relates to goals and objectives, these are listed in more depth in the staff report. But staff does find the request manages growth in an efficient, fiscally responsible way. It promotes infill and redevelopment in an area very well-served by city infrastructure and utilities, provides housing variety and flexibility on density, and also has the potential to increase access to affordable housing. So based on the preceding information, staff and planning commission are recommending approval of the rezone request. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. If the land is rezoned, that allows for a higher density, but a developer still would have to go through a next process if they wish to develop the land, right? And what's that called again?
Correct, Madam Mayor. So there's a number of processes it could go through. It could either go through a site development review, which would be a review by staff to confirm parking, landscaping, all setbacks are met. Or it could go through a formal subdivision or plan development process, which is a more formalized hearing process that goes through administrative process as well as really what you're seeing here this evening. Both are highly vetted, both obviously have to meet the clear intents of the land use and development code as it stands today. And so there will certainly be more eyes on this moving forward if it does proceed to development.
I think, yeah, thank you.
And some of those, just to point out, is that they actually evaluate sewer capacity, street capacity, traffic loads. They evaluate all of these things during that process.
Very well put. Thank you for that clarity. Yeah, we have all eyes on it. We have Scott Murphy, our city engineer, looking at all capacity standards and thresholds as well as our planning department looking in depth and a number of other entities looking into it. So certainly not one set of eyes moving forward, not a very thorough, detailed review.
Thank you. Does council have any other questions or comments? Okay, then on this, we would have a public comment period. Does anyone from the public wish to make comment about this? Seeing none. Would entertain a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2637 on second reading as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. Please vote. Who are you waiting for?
Did you save it, Ed? Did you save it?
We're good. Okay, and that passes four to one. Moving on, our next item is ordinance 2638 on second reading. This is council consideration of an ordinance designating the Coors Building at 134 North First Street, Montrose, Colorado, as a city of Montrose historic property pursuant to section 11 dash three of the official code of the city of Montrose. Planner, William Reese.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of city council. As you know, city council voted unanimously to approve ordinance 2638 on first reading. There have been no changes to the ordinance since then. Staff finds that the Coors Building located at 134 North First Street is eligible for inclusion on the city's register of historic places due to its association with the history of saloons in Montrose, having been erected as a saloon and rooming house by the Adolf Coors Company in 1905. And the building, although altered, reflects design and construction elements of early 20th century architecture, including the flat roof with parapet, brick walls, round arched windows with stone sill courses and projecting cornice. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 2638 on second reading as presented. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. We talked about this pretty extensively the first time we read it. Any questions or comments? Okay, then I'll hold a hearing. The difference between a hearing and public comment is the hearings required by our city rules and the public comment we just do so that we can give the public every opportunity to comment. And the other thing, a hearing, I use the gavel and I go, the hearing's open, would anyone like to make public comment?
I think you scared him with the.
With the gavel? Okay. Seeing no public comment, I'll close the hearing and entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2638 on second reading as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. So we'll move on to item 12, which is the Grove Preliminary Plan Development. This is city council consideration of the Grove Preliminary Plan Development. And I'll turn this back over to our planner, William Reese.
Thank you again. This time, I do have a brief presentation to share. So the Grove Preliminary Plan Development is associated with the Grove subdivision, which came before city council as a preliminary plat earlier this year. That plat was formally approved on March 21st, and that was the subdivision application. It is worth noting that the subdivision can and likely will still move forward regardless of the outcome of tonight's hearing. But the applicant is requesting a plan development associated with the subdivision in order to allow for more innovative urban design. The Grove subdivision is located on an area of approximately 44.64 acres and consists of 129 single family residential lots. The Grove Plan Development is a request for deviations to city standards, namely the setback regulations specific to open air porch structures. The setback requirements for the remainder of the house structures would not be modified with this application. This is the sole request for deviations to city standards.
Can I just make sure I heard you right? That the deviation was in a porch? What? I didn't quite hear you. Can you say it again?
The deviation is a request for deviations to the setbacks specifically for open air porch structures.
Okay, open air porch structures.
Correct. And not, the deviations would not be to the remainder of the house, anything enclosed.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt you. I just, that seemed like an important thing to hear.
Yes, agreed. It is worth noting that the subdivision plat, as well as the road network, open space, et cetera, are not being changed with this application from what has already been approved. The property is zoned R two low density district, which is intended to provide a quiet, low density development for single family residences. The subdivision consists of single family residential lots, all of which need to and will comply with the minimum lot size requirements. Again, the requested deviation is specifically to the porch structures, and that would not increase or decrease the density of the subdivision. Normally, when you've seen plan developments, they typically come at the same time as the preliminary plat, but that doesn't necessarily always have to be the case. In this instance, as mentioned, the subdivision could still move forward if the PD is not approved. Sometimes the PD is what makes the subdivision possible, but that's not the case here. So the subdivision was able to be approved prior to today. According to our comprehensive plan, this area is listed as residential mixed density low, which provides primarily for single family homes, as well as small amounts of attached residential dwelling units, such as duplexes or townhomes. As mentioned, the property is zoned R two low density. Adjacent zoning includes more R two, R one, R three, and some areas outside of city limits. And so this slide here shows the deviations being requested as part of this plan development. And this table is really what is being voted on tonight. The column on the right shows the standard setbacks for the R two zoning district, which the majority of each house will still need to comply with, meaning anything that is enclosed. The center column shows the requested setbacks for the open air porches. As you can see, they are requesting a front setback of 17 feet, side of five feet, rear of 15 feet, and corner lots of 14 feet, as opposed to 25, six, 20, and 20 respectively. This is the proposed PD plan itself. This does show the overall subdivision, which again has not deviated from what was approved on March 21st. A PD does require the developer to set aside 20% of the subdivision for open space, as opposed to the 8% that is typically required. They were already accomplishing that with the original subdivision. 21.98% of the subdivision is planned for open space. You can see that the table on the right, it is a bit small here, that does show the request for deviations from city standards. Staff does find that this plan development application is in order, and the request is not adverse to the public health, safety and welfare, and allows for a unique urban design. This was brought before the planning commission at their August 23rd meeting. They voted unanimously to recommend city council's approval of the PD application. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, one of the things that we have seen in the city is that when homeowners enclose a porch structure, that is there any kind of moratorium or condition on this PD that prohibits homeowners from enclosing those porch structures? Because then that would violate our primary structure setback rule.
Yeah, so the, it's noted on the PD itself that these deviations are specifically to open air porch structures. If something was going to be enclosed, it would require a building permit through that review. If they were requesting an enclosed porch that was within those setbacks, that would not be permitted. If it was outside of those setbacks, then that's a different story. That could be enclosed.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, thank you very much. This does allow for public comment. Anyone here to make public comment on the Grove Preliminary Plan Development? Want to, okay, come on forward. You got to, you got to come forward, you got to say your name. And it's, you know, we stick more comments than questions.
Mr. Zinsey again, 534 Stamford Lane. I'm just curious, I couldn't see the screen from there. What part of the city is this development in?
That's a great question. This is way to the east. It's just south of Brown Ranch.
South of what?
Brown's Ranch. Like east of town, like.
Way east?
Southeast.
Okay.
Yeah. It's like the part of the city that goes all the way over and comes down.
I'd just like to drive around town and see what, oh, the new building and what's going on. So I'm just curious, where is that?
Okay, there you go. They're moving some dirt around if you want to drive out there. I think you go east on Oak Grove and then you go, so Grove, Ogden. Go east on Ogden. The road will curve around to the south. It'll be on your left. Okay, fantastic. Okay. Seeing no further public comment or public questions, consider motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the Grove Preliminary Plan Development as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. And that passes unanimously, taking us to our last action item, which is item 13, ordinance 2640 on first reading. This is city council consideration of ordinance 2640, which is an ordinance amending the zoning district designation of lot one of the Parks and Wheeler subdivision from R two low density district to R three A medium high density district. Planner, William Reese.
Thank you again. This rezone application is in reference to a property located on the north side of Ogden Road, as can be seen in this map, legally known as lot one of the Parks and Wheeler subdivision, and is approximately 10.8 acres in size. The property is currently zoned R two low density district, and the applicant is seeking a rezone to R three A medium high density district. One quick thing I do want to point out, the Dry Cedar Creek two annexation that you heard somewhat recently was formally approved and annexed just to the southwest of this property. This map was made prior to the update in our GIS system. So just note that there is also a property just to the southwest that is zoned R three A. It's also worth noting that the, that applicant, the Dry Cedar Creek two applicant, which was Real America LLC, provided a letter in support of this application stating that the area is prime for growth and further development will enhance the greater community of Montrose. We did not receive any other written public comments. The surrounding area is zoned R two and R three A, and the area just across the street is zoned as R four high density district. And there are also some areas outside of city limits. The applicant did ask me to include this graphic, which shows some of the commercial development that has been occurring in the proximity. This property was originally annexed and zoned in 2001. Since then, of course, there's been significant commercial development along Townsend that you can see here. The rec center has been built just down the road, as well as pedestrian and bike paths, and of course, some residential development in the vicinity. This slide shows the rezone criteria, which need to be considered with any rezone application. The amendment to the zoning map should not be adverse to the public health, safety and welfare, and the amendment should be in substantial conformity with the master plan or conditions in the area affected or adjacent areas have changed materially since the area was last zoned. As mentioned on the last slide, the area was zoned in 2001, and the area has certainly changed materially due to commercial and residential development, mainly to the west and some on the east. The applicant has provided some pictures of the site. Currently, it's a vacant property with no current development, but they are applying for R three A, which our code says provides for an area which is suitable for single family homes, duplexes and multifamily residences, along with certain other compatible land uses. According to our comprehensive plan, this area is listed as residential mixed density low, which provides primarily for single family homes, duplexes and multifamily resident, excuse me, provides for single family homes, as well as attached residential development, such as duplexes or townhomes. The proposal would also meet several of the goals which are outlined within our comprehensive plan. Goal five within our land use chapter states that we should promote higher density infill and redevelopment of underutilized sites that can be easily accessed by foot, bike and/or public transit. Our housing goals outline the desire to encourage a greater variety of housing types, tenure and density to meet the community's needs. The goals also include the encouragement of a mix of housing price ranges, including increased access to affordable and workforce housing. In summary, staff does find that the proposal meets the rezone criteria in section 11, 712 subsection one. It's in compliance with the comprehensive plan and its goals and objectives. It is compatible with the existing uses in the surrounding area, and conditions have changed in the affected area since the property was annexed in 2001. We did bring this to the planning commission on August 23rd. They unanimously voted to recommend approval of the rezone request. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 2640 on first reading as presented, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much.
Any questions from council?
For a quick clarification, that there is a large pole barn structure being built, but that is on the adjacent lot to the west, correct?
Correct.
Just making sure that people understand that they're not the same thing.
Okay, no questions from council. Is there any public comment about us passing an ordinance on first reading to rezone this particular parcel? Do you see a public comment on rezoning this particular parcel? So would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 1640 on first reading as presented.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second, so please vote. And that passes unanimously. So we did strike items 14 and 15 from the agenda. And so that allows us to, we concluded with the voting part and the action items, and will now do our standard way to end our meeting, which is any staff reports from any of our staff that want to update us on a project. Scott, you look anxious, or not anxious, you look ready to update us on a project.
Excited. So, great news. Ninth, so both sides of ninth have been repaved and are reopened. South third, the plaza, the parking area and the turn at Cascade as part of the South third plaza is paved and reopened. So a couple of projects coming here. They're currently working on the new turn lane at Odell. So if you see that closure there, that'll probably be in a couple of weeks yet. And then they're actually going to repave all of Odell, so there'll be a pretty impactful closure during that. But that portion should go a lot quicker than the rework that's going on right now, where they're adding a turn lane.
When you say they're getting all of Odell, is that across Woodgate?
Oh, sorry, Odell, yeah. So between Woodgate and Townsend, so that remaining portion. Yeah. And yeah, what's going on there is they are adding a right turn lane there with the additional lane coming off of Woodgate. Miami was almost complete, as happens sometimes in this profession. You find some varied things that you did not know exist. We found after paving, a wood, some water coming to the surface. I'll take the vibrations and whatnot from the paving where what? The straw broke the camel's back, but we found over two lines, over 100 years old steel and a wood pipe that had some groundwater in them that had enough water behind it that was coming up to the surface. So there is some rework going on there, unfortunately. You know, from those times, we don't have the records. We don't usually tear up eight foot down to try and find those things because it was driving beneath the canal. And so a little bit of work going there. So probably another week or two on that one to get that buttoned up. And then Miami will be reopened. And then we have a pave date set for 6,700, the main portion, for mid October. So the project itself, there will be a lot of work that will take place behind the paving, you know, into November. But, so the road wouldn't be opened then, but gets us paved before the weather turns too cold to pave.
Can you expand a little about a wooden pipe? So was that being used or how does water, how is water coming up? And was the wooden pipe in use?
So some of the original piping, Will, we need to have Will do a newspaper thing for us on some of the history of this stuff. It's pretty interesting. So wood pipe, it's kind of like an oak barrel. And as long as it stays wet, it does great. It's held together by steel bands. And a lot of the original piping network that fed the town, mostly the name of fire protection downtown, was fed by wood pipe systems. You can imagine the craftsmanship that's required to make a wood pipe withstand, you know, over 100 PSI. A lot of those pipes, when they try and are switched over to modern pipes, so this one actually, you know, it's a great, you can see history right there in one trench cut. So right next to the wood pipe is a steel pipe. So that was their replacement for wood at that era. Transite pipe wasn't in existence yet. And so they went steel at that time. And that was abandoned, and then they went to AC, so, which is still pretty old. So I mean, that tells you how, how old, these are all the original feeds for the town coming down Miami Road. The, and what happens is they're abandoned. So they bring the, you know, the main water service into the new lines, and they usually left the old ones in place buried and didn't have any records of them. Over time, you know, wood and the steel, you know, wet, dry, wet, dry cycles, they corrode and eventually kind of rot out. And then you have openings in that pipe, you know, along its three mile run, two mile run there. And groundwater, various ditches across the way that are near it, water gets into it, and then it runs down it and can run sometimes for, you know, miles, and then pops up when it gets out to the end and can't get out.
Okay, that answers where the water came from. So it's not being used, but it's still collecting groundwater that got to the end and then came up.
Correct, yep. And then, you know, before this product, there's that much, you know, width on the pipe to hold it in place. But when you do the construction work, there's a lot of vibration, a lot of truck traffic. Now, just enough to, you know, take off that last little piece holding that groundwater in place. And then that water comes out, so, yeah.
And when something like that happens, it's not the contractor's fault or anything? So the city uses our contingency funds to do the repair work necessary?
Exactly, yep. That's why we set those projects up. That way, this will fit well within the contingency. You know, in our designs, we do record research, you know, obviously field investigations, sometimes exploratory digging to find everything we know about or suspect to be there. You know, some of these that are, again, over 100 years old, that it's just, there's no records there. It's really deep, so you wouldn't even have any indication. There's no valves on it that would give you indications that it's there. So it's just kind of nature of the business when you're dealing with some of these older roads. And so that's exactly why we, yeah, carry contingency in these projects for when these things come up.
Do we know how far up it goes? It used to be a story.
It used to be a storage, water storage pump over there, 6720, about 300.
Yep, so at least, it goes at least to the highway, is best we can tell. So we think it was one of the main feeds, going back to the highway, because we had a similar sinkhole developed when we did the 6,800 project, similar thing. We were digging beside it, didn't even know it was there, went past, and two months later, a hole shows up. In this case, it was a little different failure, is because that pipe was open, you know, it just, when it rained, and that was a low point, the water dropped the soil with it and would fill up the pipe, the wood pipe, and left kind of a cavern. So we dig it up, plug it where we can, and, so it's, it appears around the entire length of Miami. And, you know, a lot of the wood network was into downtown, so it likely came into downtown, probably Downing Street.
Is there any chance of it possibly happening someplace else on Miami based on groundwater? I mean, sometimes a ditch, running in and out.
Certainly, yeah, yeah. So in cases like that, you know, one option is to remove it the whole length, and then you'd be digging up, you know, doing a half-a-million-dollar project. In this case, we put in an intercept pipe to allow it to drain, so it won't build up. We are actually going to remove it within that patch area, because we've had so many problems in that area, we don't want to take a chance of having to redo that again.
So we're going to bring it into some other ditch or...
And, so yep, so that, you know, whatever groundwater is kind of feeding and filling that area, it just kind of goes right back. It's a pretty minuscule amount of water, but when left, plugged for years and years, it builds up. But for the most part, it's really low quantity of water, less than a, less than a garden hose coming down the pipe. But, yeah, so this gives that water somewhere to go, because, yeah, you don't just want to plug it and then have that problem show up, you know, 10 feet above you kind of thing, so, and just keep chasing it.
A little?
Yeah, yeah. So at least we can, yeah, have full control within, you know, the product we just did, which was about 400-foot repave of Miami, to get rid of those dips. Probably likely culprit of those dips, too. So what we're also finding, fun, fun fact, a lot of rubble fill, so it appears that, you know, that road embankment is probably about five or six feet of original grade. And so, you know, we have a kind of layer of kind of rubble, trash-ish type fill. On top of that, what looks like the spoils that probably came out of the luteinizer when they dug the canal, and then you start getting into some road stuff. So, oh, and then you get a little bit more fill, and then, and then a true road section. So, you know, any one of those could be bad actors and those kind of things. They're kind of challenging situations to not just dig up and make an entire crater and spend, you know, a quarter of a million dollars. We're trying to be as surgical as we can and make sure that those things, but make sure that those things don't come back.
When we have the opportunity, do we pull up that old pipe, and is it interesting to look at, whether we put it in the historical museum or in a case in public works or something?
We do, yeah, yeah.
Kind of cool, right?
We keep every example we can. We've got, it's not here, but I think five or six of them that we try and preserve, and I think they talk to the museum and stuff, too, because it's a really cool part of our history.
History, yeah.
And we would, we would struggle to make pipes that cool these days, you know.
That's interesting.
So, here's a potential moneymaker for the city, is that you and William get together and do the History Channel, and kind of do the history of Montrose. I'd pay money for that.
I'll dig it. He can do, tell us, I'm not even going to come close to Will's talent.
Put a museum of public works in the front of the new public works?
That's been, yeah, like cases, and, you know, survey equipment and stuff.
Cases, yeah.
Yeah, it is really, really cool stuff.
Digging up some pretty cool stuff. Cool. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other staff reports, anything that council needs to be made aware of? Okay, seeing none. How about city council or comments, anything that council wants to bring up? Okay, then would someone make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. We are adjourned.